I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 2nd Malibu City Council Budget Workshop Special Meeting to order, and may I please have a rule call?
Councilmember Lamont?
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Mullen?
Here.
Mayor Peake?
Here. Mary Ann, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Anyone want to make an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda was, the agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 26, 2017.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment? No? Okay, going to new business. So, proposed budget for fiscal year 2017 to 2018. Assistant Manager Lisa Sogar.
Good evening, Mayor Peake and council members. Thank you for coming tonight for my first ever budget meeting. Before we begin, I want to thank the staff who helped put this together, including Ruth Piemon, Renee Nierman, Joni Hand, and the Finance Department, and all the other department heads and their staff who made this possible. So, moving forward, let's take a look. So, the city's budget is based on the expected revenue for the upcoming year. In fiscal year 2017-2018, the city anticipates receiving $57.2 million of revenue, including[852.54][852.54]$28.5 million of general fund revenue. And, looking at how the general fund revenues break down, you can see that property taxes account for forty percent of that general fund revenue. The other major tax revenue sources include sales tax, utility users tax, and transient occupancy tax, with some other smaller taxes, and together they make up another thirty-six percent. Licenses and permits and service charges are the next largest sources of our revenue, and those both come in at about ten percent. Looking at the ten-year trends, the review of the general fund revenue demonstrates that the city's financial growth and stability is on course. The city began to see significant growth in fiscal year 2012-2013, with general fund revenues increasing from $21.6 million in fiscal year 11-12 to $25 million in fiscal year 13-14, and finally to $30.5 million in revenue last year. As my predecessor in this position before me, I'm also fairly conservative in terms of budgeting and forecasting. So, you'll see that we are projecting this year's revenue and proposing next year's general fund revenue as slightly less than what came in actually last year. We're gonna watch those numbers, and we would anticipate that they will come in greater than last year, but we'll adjust the budget accordingly as we move through the budget process and get more information. The information on the assessed property values for the city of Malibu comes from the Los Angeles County Assessors Office, and shows an assessed value of over $14.5 billion. What's significant about this is that the majority of Malibu's property is residential. Cities that have comparably assessed values typically are much bigger and have many large industrial or commercial centers. And you can look at this graph and see that we started ten years ago with an assessed property value of $9 billion, and today are at more than $14.5 billion for a fifty-eight percent increase in assessed property values. The growth in secured property tax follows the same trend line as the city's overall general fund revenue, as well as the growth, growth in the assessed property values. Ten years ago, the city received $6.4 million in revenue from property taxes, and today that revenue is over $9 million for a forty-three percent increase over those ten years. The city's second-largest tax revenue source is sales tax, which has experienced growth over the past few years. The city's major sales tax contributors are typically restaurants. The projected budget includes over $3.5 million of sales tax revenue. Utility users' tax revenue is fairly consistent with an approximate annual revenue of $2.4 million. We don't typically see a lot of growth in this, it's fairly static, but at that amount, it's a significant contributor to our revenue. Tax from hotels and motels and the short-term rentals of private homes has increased over the past ten years as well. Tax from hotels and motels now exceeds $1.2 million. The projected amount for the coming fiscal year is $1.5 million, which takes into account the recent opening of Nobu Riocon. And even though we've increased the amount from this fiscal year, we're being fairly conservative in our estimate because we have no historical data for the new hotel with which to base any expected revenue. So, we're gonna continue to monitor these revenues as the year progresses, and we will again update the budget accordingly. The city currently has one hundred and seventy-seven properties registered as short-term rentals. When we first began collecting this revenue source in 2009, we generated $100,000. This year, we anticipate revenues of over $1 million. Additionally, part of this revenue comes from Airbnb, who began collecting tax on behalf of the city in April 2015, and has over two hundred properties registered with them. Airbnb has remitted over $700,000 for the first three quarters of this fiscal year. The budget for next year projects only $800,000 in revenue, and is taking into account the council direction to explore limiting short-term rentals in the city. Again, we'll monitor these revenues over the course of the year, and depending on how the short-term rental ordinance plays out, and we'll adjust this budget number as necessary. The proposed expenditure budget is based on the council's priorities and approved work plan. The work plan for 2017-2018 is attached at the end of the budget, and details the city's priorities and which departments will work collaboratively to achieve them. So, very briefly, I'd like to review some of the highlights and accomplishments of the work plan from last year. The city continues to be a leader in environmental issues. Environmental programs are well-received by the community. The One Water Malibu Campaign promotes water conservation measures through four new videos and other educational materials. We have also installed water bottle filling stations and battery recycling receptacles at City Hall, and have held numerous workshops and recycling events to engage staff and the community in creative ways to be sustainable. The council's priorities come from the desire to provide excellent service to the Malibu community. This service ranges from outstanding community programs like Chumash Days and Concert on the Bluffs, to major capital improvements that enhance the safety for residents and visitors. This past year, we developed a coordinated summer traffic and safety plan with LA County Beaches and Harbors, the LA County Sheriffs, and the California Highway Patrol. We released bid packages for the design of Pacific Coast Highway Signal Synchronization Project and the PCH Median Improvement Project. Of course, we also undertook our largest capital project this year, the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility. In order to meet the needs of our residents, the city must engage the community. A successful town hall meeting on homelessness was a great forum for the exchange of ideas. Our new Public Safety Manager will help us in formulating new ways to reach out to our residents. And enhancements to the city's media outlets and the twenty-four-hour hotline and social media improvements have increased the way we communicate both to and from the city. So, now let's look at the breakdown of the expenditures by fund. The city has a balanced general fund budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018, which means that ongoing operating expenses do not exceed the annual general fund revenue for the year. Total expenditures are projected at $57.9 million. The general fund expenditure budget is $28.1 million, and is consistent with the projected general fund revenue amount of $28.1 million. This slide shows $28.8 million in the general fund expenses, because it also includes some one-time capital projects that are being funded with general fund dollars. Other major expenses include $6.5 million in grant-funded capital projects and $19.5 million of special revenue expenses. The Legacy Park Project Fund expenses are budgeted at $2.3 million. If we look at a breakdown of total expenditures, it shows that twenty-seven percent of the total expenditure budget will go to operating and maintenance, thirteen percent to public safety, seventeen percent to personnel, and forty-three percent to capital projects. You can see that the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility construction takes up a large percentage of this total budget, and that's why the percentage on capital improvement projects is so high in this breakdown. The same breakdown of just the general fund shows operating and maintenance expenses at forty-one percent, public safety at twenty-six percent, personnel at thirty-one percent, and capital projects at two percent. Public safety is one of the city's highest priorities. Earlier, I talked about briefly on the road improvement projects that were starting, and that have added to the city's public safety, but law enforcement is a major part of our public safety mission. The city will spend $7.4 million on its contract with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department next year. Compared to other neighboring contract cities, Malibu spends $570 annually per residence, on the, per resident on this very important expense. All cities that have contracts with the Los Angeles County Sheriff participate in covering the costs for the Liability Trust Fund. In recent years, the costs for this fund have been increasing as a part of the settlements that the county has had to pay out. A number of city managers, including Riva, have been actively working on ways to figure out to curtail these costs. The proposed budget includes $24.8 million for capital projects. Ongoing multi-year projects include the Street Overlay Project, improvements to PCH, and other Measure R projects. There are also clean water projects and improvements to city facilities, including the design for the solar carport at City Hall. The largest, doesn't want to go. The largest capital improvement project in the city is the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility. As you've heard from our trusted Public Works Director, we're on track and on budget. Construction began in the current fiscal year and is now approximately fifty percent complete. The projected completion date for Phase 1 is September of 2018. The city does not yet have the cost for the lateral connections of the city properties to the treatment facilities. When those numbers come in, which should be before the May 22nd public hearing on the budget, we will amend the budget to reflect those costs. The Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility is funded with a combination of bonds, a grant, and loans from the State Water Resources Control Board. The bonds and loans will ultimately be repaid by the newly-formed Assessment District. The city has held meetings with the Phase 1 property owners regarding connecting to the system and the ongoing rate study. Initial property owner meetings for Phase 2 of the project will begin at the end of this month. Just in terms of touching on the funding sources for our capital improvement projects, I mentioned the funding sources for the wastewater. Our other capital projects will be funded from Measure R funding in the amount of $1.8 million, and $500,000 of special revenue. Additionally, there will be $715,000 coming from the general fund capital improvement project reserve. The proposed budget includes funding for seventy-six full-time employees, the equivalent of twelve empola, twelve employees working as part-time staff, and the equivalent of four employees working as student interns. I do want to make a note that our student intern program has been very successful for the city. Not only are we providing a great learning experience for the students who, who come through the program, but we have also ended up hiring some of those students as permanent staff. All the salary ranges, positions, and benefits are approved by council as part of the final budget. I do want to mention, at the bottom of this slide, it talks about CalPERS rates, which are now at sixteen point five nine percent. They've been increasing slightly, and we're working on lowering those costs. And sort of want to talk a little bit more about that, especially in light of recent news stories about the ongoing costs of public employee pensions and retiree health benefits. A lot of cities have been struggling with this, and so I think it's worth it for us to go a little bit more in-depth into this right now. A little history, in 2012, to get a handle on growing retirement costs, California passed the Public Employees Pension Reform Act, or PEPRA, which took effect in January of 2013. Public employees hired before that date are termed "classic" and retain their benefits. Employees hired after that are termed "new" and have different benefit levels. The city pays the full share of retirement benefits for classic employees. New employees must contribute a percentage of weekly, or in payroll to their pension costs. So, you can see, looking at this chart, when PEPRA started in 2013, we had sixty cl-.
The city currently has 177 properties registered as short-term rentals. When we first began collecting this revenue source in 2009, we generated $100,000. This year, we anticipate revenues of over $1 million. Additionally, part of this revenue comes from Airbnb, who began collecting tax on behalf of the city in April 2015 and has over 200 properties registered with them. Airbnb has remitted over $700,000 for the first three quarters of this fiscal year. The budget for next year projects only $800,000 in revenue and is taking into account the council direction to explore limiting short-term rentals in the city. Again, we'll monitor these revenues over the course of the year and depending on how the short-term rental ordinance plays out, and we'll adjust this budget number as necessary. The proposed expenditure budget is based on the council's priorities and approved work plan. The work plan for 2017-2018 is attached at the end of the budget and details the city's priorities and which departments will work collaboratively to achieve them. So very briefly, I'd like to review some of the highlights and accomplishments of the work plan from last year. The city continues to be a leader in environmental issues. Environmental programs are well-received by the community. The One Water Malibu Campaign promotes water conservation measures through four new videos and other educational materials. We have also installed water bottle filling stations and battery recycling receptacles at City Hall and have held numerous workshops and recycling events to engage staff and the community in creative ways to be sustainable. The council's priorities come from the desire to provide excellent service to the Malibu community. This service ranges from outstanding community programs like Chumash Days and Concert on the Bluffs to major capital improvements that enhance the safety for residents and visitors. This past year, we developed a coordinated summer traffic and safety plan with LA County Beaches and Harbors, the LA County Sheriffs, and the California Highway Patrol. We released bid packages for the design of Pacific Coast Highway Signal Synchronization Project and the PCH Median Improvement Project. Of course, we also undertook our largest capital project this year, the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility. In order to meet the needs of our residents, the city must engage the community. A successful town hall meeting on homelessness was a great forum for the exchange of ideas. Our new public safety manager will help us in formulating new ways to reach out to our residents. And enhancements to the city's media outlets and the 24-hour hotline and social media improvements have increased the way we communicate both to and from the city. So now, let's look at the breakdown of the expenditures by fund. The city has a balanced general fund budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018, which means that ongoing operating expenses do not exceed the annual general fund revenue for the year. Total expenditures are projected at $57.9 million. The general fund expenditure budget is $28.1 million and is consistent with the projected general fund revenue amount of $28.1 million. This slide shows $28.8 million in the general fund expenses because it also includes some one-time capital projects that are being funded with general fund dollars. Other major expenses include $6.5 million in grant-funded capital projects and $19.5 million of special revenue expenses. The Legacy Park Project Fund expenses are budgeted at $2.3 million. If we look at a breakdown of total expenditures, it shows that 27% of the total expenditure budget will go to operating and maintenance, 13% to public safety, 17% to personnel, and 43% to capital projects. You can see that the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility construction takes up a large percentage of this total budget, and that's why the percentage on capital improvement projects is so high in this breakdown. The same breakdown of just the general fund shows operating and maintenance expenses at 41%, public safety at 26%, personnel at 31%, and capital projects at 2%. Public safety is one of the city's highest priorities. Earlier, I talked about briefly on the road improvement projects that were starting and that have added to the city's public safety. But law enforcement is a major part of our public safety mission. The city will spend $7.4 million on its contract with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department next year. Compared to other neighboring contract cities, Malibu spends $570 annually per resident on this very important expense. All cities that have contracts with the Los Angeles County Sheriff participate in covering the costs for the Liability Trust Fund. In recent years, the costs for this fund have been increasing as a part of the settlements that the county has had to pay out. A number of city managers, including Riva, have been actively working on ways to figure out to curtail these costs. The proposed budget includes $24.8 million for capital projects. Ongoing multi-year projects include the Street Overlay Project, improvements to PCH, and other Measure R projects. There are also clean water projects and improvements to city facilities, including the design for the solar carport at City Hall. The largest -- doesn't want to go. The largest capital improvement project in the city is the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility. As you've heard from our trusted Public Works Director, we're on track and on budget. Construction began in the current fiscal year and is now approximately 50% complete. The projected completion date for Phase 1 is September of 2018. The city does not yet have the cost for the lateral connections of the city properties to the treatment facilities. When those numbers come in, which should be before the May 22 public hearing on the budget, we will amend the budget to reflect those costs. The Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility is funded with a combination of bonds, a grant, and loans from the State Water Resources Control Board. The bonds and loans will ultimately be repaid by the newly-formed Assessment District. The city has held meetings with the Phase 1 property owners regarding connecting to the system and the ongoing rate study. Initial property owner meetings for Phase 2 of the project will begin at the end of this month. Just in terms of touching on the funding sources for our capital improvement projects, I mentioned the funding sources for the wastewater. Our other capital projects will be funded from Measure R funding in the amount of $1.8 million and $500,000 of special revenue. Additionally, there will be $715,000 coming from the general fund capital improvement project reserve. The proposed budget includes funding for 76 full-time employees, the equivalent of 12 employees working as part-time staff, and the equivalent of four employees working as student interns. I do want to make a note that our student intern program has been very successful for the city. Not only are we providing a great learning experience for the students who come through the program, but we have also ended up hiring some of those students as permanent staff. All the salary ranges, positions, and benefits are approved by council as part of the final budget. I do want to mention, at the bottom of this slide, it talks about CalPERS rates, which are now at 16.59%. They've been increasing slightly, and we're working on lowering those costs. And sort of want to talk a little bit more about that, especially in light of recent news stories about the ongoing costs of public employee pensions and retiree health benefits. A lot of cities have been struggling with this, and so I think it's worth it for us to go a little bit more in-depth into this right now. A little history, in 2012, to get a handle on growing retirement costs, California passed the Public Employees Pension Reform Act, or PEPRA, which took effect in January of 2013. Public employees hired before that date are termed "classic" and retain their benefits. Employees hired after that are termed "new" and have different benefit levels. The city pays the full share of retirement benefits for classic employees. New employees must contribute a percentage of weekly -- in payroll to their pension costs. So you can see, looking at this chart, when PEPRA started in 2013, we had 60 classic employees, really no new employees yet. And today, we're looking at having 48 classic and 28 new. So again, this is at -- we've increased staffing levels, but you can still see that the sort of the number of classic, and thus our costs are dropping. So this is helping us keep the current payroll costs down. In 2013, we were paying just over $1 million for PERS costs, and next year, we're projecting that we'll pay closer to $900,000. So even though the number of staff and the cost of payroll have increased, our PERS burden will be less. Some public agencies are continuing to struggle under the burden of these costs. The city's worked very hard to be aware of the trends and plan accordingly. Our job is slightly easier than other cities because we don't have any public safety employees or unions, so that limits our liabilities. And additionally, we've always sort of had a conservative PERS contribution plan to begin with. In addition to pension costs, the city will pay $230,000 next year to cover health insurance for our existing retirees by requiring five years of employment before health benefits are vested. We have again limited some of our future liability. We have also been putting money aside, as we're required to do, to cover these costs in the future, and in the next year's budget will contribute $500,000 to these other post-employment Each year, the council awards funds to local nonprofit groups through the General Fund Grant Program. This year's budget includes $175,000 for these grants. The grants were discussed by the Administration and Finance Subcommittee, starting at 9:00 this morning, and the Subcommittee's recommendations will be included in the budget item that comes before you on May 22. It is worth noting that for that $175, we received 41 applications totaling over $625,000. So our Subcommittee members had a tough challenge this morning trying to figure out how to allocate the resources. The proposed budget provides for a general fund undesignated reserve of 90% of the annual general fund operating budget. So we've well exceeded our mandated 50% general fund reserve. The city continues to see an increase in its general fund reserves, and maintaining strong revenues is particularly important while we're in the middle -- strong reserves is particularly important while we're in the middle of the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility construction because funding for the project is on a reimbursable basis, and we need to ensure that we have adequate cash flow to pay the contractors. The proposed budget anticipates a starting general fund undesignated reserve at $24.9 million and an ending reserve amount of $25.3 million. The total of all funds at the end of this fiscal year will be $35.8 million and a projected ending balance for next fiscal year of $35.1 million. In addition to the undesignated reserves, the council has approved specific projects with set-aside funds that are tracked separately as designated reserves. Some are funded with general fund revenue, but others are funded with special revenue like gas taxes or highway funds. Legacy Park revenues come from the lease payments of the commercial tenants. There was a decrease in this fund balance from the one-time payment for the wastewater treatment facility assessment, which will ultimately be reimbursed. The funds you see in the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility line are the prepaid assessments by the city and the County of Los Angeles. The city's holding these funds, and they'll be used ultimately for construction. So we're nearing the end, and here's the schedule coming up. So the Administration and Finance Subcommittee met this morning to review the general fund grants, and they will meet again on Thursday, May 4, to discuss the budget. The budget public hearing will be held on May 22, and the final budget will be back for review on June 26. So I'm gonna -- I'm here to answer any questions in addition to our department heads, but I know Riva would like to take a few moments to talk about the work program.
You didn't think I wasn't going to talk tonight, did you? Thank you, Lisa. That was really, really helpful. I wanted to just touch on a few things that we've done a little differently this year and call them out so that you know. First of all, what we've done in terms of our public safety services is we've combined what used to be what we called divisions. We had an emergency preparedness division and our public safety division. The public safety division traditionally just had the contract with Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and a few other miscellaneous expenses, and we've combined that into one division for the upcoming year, which reflects how we're approaching our public safety, both internally and externally. So I wanted to call that out. We've added a new division for our cultural arts programs under Community Services. Over the last couple of years, there has been funding allocated to the cultural arts programs, but it was combined in with other existing divisions. And so we've created a separate division for cultural arts, so you'll see that, and we've assigned specific staffing to that division to reflect the growing need and workload for those activities. There are four new positions called out in this budget that have been included. One is a full-time information technology technician. That's for our computer services. The services right now are being provided via a contract personnel through like a temp agency, but with the growing need in our computer and technology needs, I think it's something that behooves us to have another staff person to help with some of those on a dedicated basis. We've added an office assistant into the Environmental Sustainability Department. That department has not really seen any additional staff for quite some time, but their workload continues to grow as we emphasize the environmental needs of the city. So we felt that giving them some additional administrative assistance was really needed. We've added, in response to a lot of the comments and complaints that we get, an additional code enforcement officer to help us stay on top of that, so that has been included. And then finally, we added a recreation coordinator into Community Services, and that person will assist primarily with cultural arts activities and events. So those are the positions. We do have $330,000 coming in as a reimbursement from FEMA. That's what we spent this past year on the storms, and so I just want to make sure the council knows we are hoping to get that money reimbursed, and it's something we are proactively tracking. But if somehow we don't get approval from FEMA on that, that would be something we'd have to pay out of the general fund. Lisa mentioned we'll be coming back with the lateral connections for the wastewater project. Those are the connections that each property owner in the Assessment District has to pay. So it's for City Hall, the commercial properties, and Bluffs Park. So we'll come back in a few weeks for that. The other item, too, that I wanted to just remind the council of is not only is the wastewater project a reimbursable project, as we move forward with these many LA County Measure R projects and ultimately LA County Measure M projects, those are also on a reimbursable basis. So as we go down the path, right now, we haven't expended a lot of money, but we will be as those move forward into construction. So it's just something to keep in the back of your mind that while we're using other people's money, we have to spend our own money before we get it back from them. So I just wanted to mention all of those and then also, you know, call out how strong our undesignated reserve is and that it just continues to grow. So something the council should be very proud of. And then I'm happy to go through the work plan or call things out. I don't know how you want to do it, but -- or answer questions, or I have all of our department heads here to answer questions.
I don't know if anyone has any questions that they got off of. I wouldn't make a suggestion that we go over the -- review the work plan.
Okay.
And we can probably just go item by item by that pretty quickly, and then there's a couple of things that I was hoping that we could possibly budget for and add to the budget, and we can go over those after we go through the work plan.
All right.
And so does anyone have any questions before we do that?
Yeah, I got one quickie. On the Public Works, as I'm reading it here, it says it's decreased by $137,000, and I'm trying to do the math on the way it explains there. It says an increase of $85,000 to the wastewater and then a decrease of $40,000, so I'm trying to figure out.
Well, mostly we put those numbers in to see if everyone's paying attention. No, kidding. So what we've done is we've moved some expenditures and departments around or divisions around. Last year, we had a lot of water quality testing expenses and monitoring expenses in Public Works that have been moved over to the Environmental Sustainability Department, where they're a little more appropriately programmed. So some of that accounts for those changes. We also, on an ongoing basis, try to use one-time revenues, so gas tax revenue or traffic safety revenue or transportation funding to lessen the burden to the general fund, so that accounts, too, for some of those changes.
Okay, great. That's what I thought, that $85,000 is now being borne by a different part of the budget.
And Bob Brager just saves money every time he can, so that's what that's about.
In the planning for the code enforcement effort, are we going to have somebody working on Sundays?
We are working towards that. What we are doing now, we're working with the Sheriff's Department and our volunteers on patrol to kind of get a handle on what the extent of the problem is on weekends and using the services of the volunteers on patrol to be our eyes and ears, and then determining whether it's worth having a full-time person here on weekends. But we're working towards assessing that.
Or maybe a full-time person during the summer on weekends.
Perhaps on the summer. My concern, and I think I've shared this with you before, is that if I have a staff person out on the East End and there are things going on the West End, they won't know about it, and that kind of defeats the purpose. So we've got to figure out how to make that practical and make sense. So we're certainly -- it's on the plate to figure that out.
All right. Thank you. Laura.
Just generally, excellent job, Lisa, for newbie and for anybody, even newbie or not. And so I appreciate, and I appreciate some of the different ways that it's presented to. Just, and I don't know who the answer would be, but do we have a sense, you know, a general sense of how much those lateral connections are going to cost?
Craig, for the city?
Bob.
Or Bob? The question was if you had any idea on approximately a quarter million?
Yeah.
Yeah, about $250,000, the connection.
Total?
Total.
For all of them?
And then for the ones for Legacy Park, we could ultimately use Legacy Park funds for that.
So that would, to be clear, that's the laterals for Bluffs Park, for City Hall, and for Legacy Park.
For the three commercial properties.
And what about for La Paz?
It does not include La Paz.
Do we know what the costs -- we should probably, when we adopt the budget, if we're going to be acquiring that property in the next fiscal year, we should look at what the costs are associated with that, if we have to pay any of those.
I think that's something that the city attorney's office is addressing as part of that agreement that will be coming forward to council because it's not only going to be the lateral cost, but there's going to be some discussion about the wastewater cost ultimately for that project.
All right. Thank you.
I had another question, and it just went flying out of my mind, but it was --
Is it going to fly back into your mind?
Yeah. Yeah. On my way home, right. I'll try to -- yeah, okay, I'll try to remember it.
Did we want to -- did you guys want to go down this through, I think we've kind of already gone through the department stuff, and then we're going to go on the work plan and kind of go through that item by item? Is that okay?
Sure.
All right.
And I also just wanted to make a note for council that in prior years, the work plan that you've seen has been broken into departments. And so what we've done for this year is gone through and looked at it by subject matter and which of the council priorities do the tasks or goals meet. So I hope that gave you a different perspective on how we're thinking and how we're looking on many of the things that we have to do crossover departments, and it's definitely a collaborative process between our staff, so.
I remembered. I noticed that there was only, I think, $150,000 for the solar on here?
Yes. So that's for the design of the solar project.
So that's all we're looking to do next year is just the design?
We're going to start, we're going to put out an RFP for design services and find out what the cost is going to be, because the last cost we had was based on doing it as a purchase agreement with the provider, and we don't know what the ultimate cost is going to be. So once we go out for design, we'll have a better sense of that.
So can we --
I thought that we had a cost of about $1 million for that, though. Is that correct?
That was about what we had. It was an estimate, and so if we can come in less, we'll go out to bid and come in less for that.
But is there a way to at least put that in the budget somewhere, though, to put like a million?
That's why we're here tonight.
Oh, okay.
So if that's something you'd like to do, we can certainly do.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I would like to see that just because we know if it comes up a little more or a little less, at least we're planning on.
Yeah, I mean, I would make a suggestion that we include approximately -- and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that we had estimates for a prior plan ranging between like 900 and something and 1.1 million?
Yeah.
So maybe we should budget 950 or $1 million based on those costs coming down a little bit and being that we're going to have to go with the lowest responsible bidder?
No problem. Can I get a --
Does that sound good?
Can we get a consensus on that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Rick?
Yes. Yep.
So let's go, let's work through this work plan. All right, Riva, I'll take you lead, and if anyone has any questions, we can ask staff to come up and answer them if we need to.
Do you want me to go through each item, or do you want to call out items you might have questions on, or that -- we just have them listed with a number. It's not a priority ranking, but we can certainly move things up and make them priorities if the council wishes, or I can give you an update on the status of where they are in terms of coming to council on specific items, if that would be more helpful. We might be wrong.
There's a lot of them. I don't know. I mean, how many there is?
Seventy-seven.
What?
Seventy-seven.
Yeah. I don't know if we want to take -- I mean, I had a couple of questions just --
Laura, why don't you start off, and you can answer the questions on the one that you have, and we'll just go down the line and do that. It's fine.
Okay. Oops, wait. Wait, one of them was already answered. You know what? Why don't you start with somebody else, because I -- one of them was already answered, and so I'm looking for the other ones.
Lou?
Well, if we want to start in the beginning, some of these public access maps and the ESHA maps, et cetera, et cetera, aren't they requirements that we have to do?
Yes, correct.
How are we doing on them?
Can you give me what number, number one and two?
It's just starting in the first section.
I actually --
The LCP Public Access Map and then the ESHA Map.
I'm going to apologize that I do not have a specific update on those, and Bonnie Blue is out with laryngitis today, so I didn't get a specific update. I was planning on having her here to answer those questions. So if you'll give me a pass on a couple of these for planning, I will get that back to you for the May 22 item or to A&amp;F.
All right. Thank you. Jefferson, did you or Rick have anything that you wanted to ask questions about on this?
Yes, thank you. If we could address the issue that was raised about the access asterisk on the Latigo Cove or the Tivoli Cove, access and egress that was indicated on the map by Coastal Commission is something that they didn't recognize the same way that the city did. And I was just wondering if we could get clarification on that. It just takes a sentence or two to tell us what the city's position is as opposed to what the Coastal Commission's position is.
Okay, we'll add that in.
And that would be your item one on page 126.
So I think that we're going to wait Bonnie's.
Right.
Riva's going to talk to Bonnie, so that'll come back to us at the -- when we adopt the budget.
That's all I was asking is because that one is somewhat important to some of us.
Didn't there are some legal precedents and so, remember Doug Komet?
Yes, I was just trying to, if we, maybe Bonnie gives it 10 minutes, looks into the depth of it, and then reports back to us, and that would be item one. Thank you.
No problem, and I apologize for not having all of the updated, the most recent information I have is what's in the written plan.
Something that I thought would be an important thing to look at, and I don't know if recall seeing it in here, is undergrounding for power poles and us making a suggestion that we, you know, as things happen and things get updated around here, that we sort of make it a policy of trying to get that done whenever possible.
We can certainly add that to the work plan. I do have that on the long-range city council meeting agenda to get a comprehensive update from our Public Works Department on that, and that we were hoping to get to council sometime this summer. But we can certainly add it to the work plan as something to investigate, and if you could just give us some more information by consensus of what you're looking for, we can add it to the work plan.
Okay, well, one thing I think that would help us for a long-term convergence of that, and obviously, as an electrical contractor, a little bit unique experience in that, is that when people go to do a lot of service upgrades, and there's a lot of those, you know, going on, will be more of those going on as more electric vehicles come into usage and the demand on our infrastructure becomes greater, is that people will upgrade their service panels in their homes, and my recommendation was that we -- their service panels in their homes. And my, my recommendation was that we require those to be in underground format, and when people go to develop new areas or anything like that, that the power and utilities be underground. And we sort of make that a little bit of a policy, I think, in the, in the Planning Department and the Building Department. So, maybe it's more of, you know, just leaning in that direction than getting some, some feedback from, from Edison on if we were to do a comprehensive plan, or, you know, if we were to divide Malibu up into different areas or districts for that to say, you know, we could do this and get some costs. I know that I've received some questions from the public in, in certain areas about it, and, you know, they weren't necessarily happy with what those, those costs were, and then the costs have increased, but, you know, if we can get that information to the public, then they can make decisions of whether or not they want to do that in their neighborhood.
So, can I just get a consensus if the council wants to add that to the work plan to investigate and undergrounding utilities, exactly what you said, which we have in the minutes, and I'll get that.
Ultimately, I think it's a public safety issue, because I think that...
We've been talking to Edison, Diane Forte, and her team, and the kind of numbers they were talking about were astronomical, just astronomical, and there must be a better way. It just seems to me that, I've said this before, we've got twenty-first century technology on eighteenth-century sticks in the ground, and it can't possibly be good.
But I just want to make sure I'm understanding, Mayor Peak, what you were asking for was also a requirement for private properties when they do an upgrade to do an undergrounding. That's in addition to doing undergrounding of general utilities.
Well, what, what that does is that sets up for the future when you go to do undergrounding, and then, then you don't have added costs associated with that, where some people, let's say if you were to drive through Malibu Colony, and you'll notice that certain properties have poles in front of their houses where the rest of them do not. So, by not, over time, requiring those people when they upgraded their service to go underground, we're now left with a situation where, which winds up costing more money to all of the homeowners, where certain properties have poles out in front of their houses. One, it's a blight in terms of the view, but more importantly, in terms of the public safety requirement, we all know what can happen in a certain form of weather when we have a problem with an electrical line. It's not to say that it couldn't happen with something underground, it's just a lot more likely to happen when you have a wood stick in the air.
So, Skylar, so are you saying that when somebody builds a house or remodels, you want them to underground the pole in front of their house, if there happens to be a pole?
No, I, I don't think that if we were to require someone to do that, that would be super expensive, but what you can do is you can require them to underground the service that's feeding the house. So, you would have a pipe coming off of the pole, and then later on, when they go to eliminate poles in certain areas, you have a pole box out on the street. So, instead of then at that point, having someone already has their house done, and they have to trench and wreck their entire property, that service is already underground. And I think it's an added benefit, one, to a homeowner, but also in terms of a public safety issue. We've had a lot of, obviously, in the recent weather, we've had a lot of trees fail and whatnot, and, and when that stuff happens, that can take out even the, the distribution that's just feeding a single home. So, that would be my, my recommendation, from both field experience, but then also the, the public safety aspect of it. So, a couple of other things that I had written down was the solar, I think, that we've addressed. I do know that we have a parks item coming up, and there's a likelihood of some capital improvement projects related to that. I think that we'll have more numbers as time goes on. I want us to be conscious of that and know that there's, you know, we're probably going to have to allocate, if, depending on what the council decides, a substantial amount of funding to look at the studies related to, to the parks, but then also if there's any build-out. So, I know that that may not come in the next three-hundred-and-sixty-five calendar days of this fiscal budget, but I want us to be aware than that when we're looking at this. And maybe we do need to add a little bit of money in there for, for some of the design-related things.
So, there is two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in the current year budget, and the staff report for the May eighth item refers to that, so there is sufficient funding if the council decides to go forward with that, with the EIR and other studies. So, we can discuss that on Monday night, but that funding, at least for that part, is already included. But there isn't capital funding.
There's like two-and-a-half million dollars available.
And then, I also wanted to look at capital funding for expanding and making the, the beach safer at Westward Beach, to, one, increase parking. I would like to see how we could widen that area of the road and create head-in parking on the ocean side of the street. Well, ultimately, if, if it was possible to create head-in parking on each side of the street, angled head-in parking, and to, to add a little wall that would prevent the amount of sand that comes onto the road when the wind. I know that if we have a, you know, a very fifty mile an hour west wind, the sand's going to climb over the wall, but in other areas, for, for most of the length of Zuma Beach, where we don't have dunes, that's in place. And we don't have dunes at Westward, I'm talking about the area where the, the public, our public road is. We have free parking in that area. I know that we can explore different parking options, but I think that we should allocate approximately a hundred to two-hundred thousand dollars to, to look at that and address that, with the capital cost coming later.
I'd, I'd like to see that, too, and actually, would save some money, because I'm always calling in and saying there's sand all over the road, let's, let's clean it up. So, I think eventually it'll make itself back.
So, what I, I would suggest with the actual cost is that between now and the May twenty-second public hearing, I'll have Public Works come up with a more accurate cost to do some design of that, and add that in, and you can decide at that time if it's more or less than what you wanted to spend, as long as I have a consensus on that.
And I wanted to just be clear sort of on, on the direction of that, and there's, there's a couple larger issues at stake here for, for the council, is, one, we've had this ongoing thing with parking, where I believe that LA County is going to, or, from Sheila's office, is going to look to possibly adding grant money towards projects that we can do where there's more funding, or where we would create more parking. So, one, this helps with our access issue, and also could be something that's used, is we're adding these spaces in this area, and we may be able to then remove them elsewhere, because for a long time, we've heard the argument from Coastal Commission, that you can't just go and put up no parking signs there, because you're taking away access for the public. And here, what would we be, we would be able to create is an area where we can offset that. And maybe we would explore looking at revenue-based, you know, an hourly-based fee for people to park there. But, but ultimately, my goal would be to create a free parking, if, if possible, in an increased amount. I know that that would increase the usage of that area, but that use, that area is our, you know, it, it is, it is a wide beach, it's less used than area where the Zuma parking lot is. I think that that would serve our city. It also would have a little bit of an impact on how some of the RVs park on that area and take up a lot of parking, and there's, there's no turnover. It's not to say that people aren't allowed to do that, they are allowed to do that, but if we put in head-in spots that were, you know, that would possibly prevent that from happening. I know that we've received some complaints related to that.
Could I also, I know that Measure M have not been allocated, and we've been working through the COG, looking at, but I would like to know if we could use some Measure M funds for a project like that?
We will certainly look into that. We definitely like spending, grant funding for anything we can.
And, oh, okay, when you're done.
The other item I had to have listed on here was sort of a carryover from something that we decided not to, to explore further, is in relation to the, the safety in the neighborhood where I live on Point Doom. I don't remember if there's, I think that, for the most part, I've heard that, that people are, are happy with some of the speed humps that have gone in in certain areas, and they're happy with the signage that we've, we've placed. I haven't had requests for another sign, I've had requests for another speed hump in the Heather Cliff Road area, from some of the owners that live out in front of the gates of the Point Doom Club. But I also think that it would be smart for us, knowing that that community's there and the amount of residents that are there, if there was a way for us to create a walk path between there and the market, and possibly we should add funding for that. And that would, I think, make the area safer if that was, you know, because then people wouldn't be walking out in the middle of the road there, and that's an area that, you know, has a, you know, higher amount of usage because the amount of people that live in the club there.
So, with that item, what I would ask is if we could get consensus from the council to add that to the work plan, and then we would have the traffic, our traffic engineer look at that area and come back with recommendations on the best thing for the safety, so if there's consensus for that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would support that. We talked about it a lot last year, and I think it, at least let's look and see what's possible, and, and get a sense of how and if that could make it a lot safer.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation would definitely be to start with the, start with the traffic engineer. I don't think that, you know, and see, and see what he comes back with in terms of a suggestion, but then also looking at, from the pedestrian's perspective.
And partially, that was done before, already, so we've got a place to start. And they were doing the crosswalks right in that same corner, so.
Just real quick for Bob's department, on the concept of head-in parking that Skylar had mentioned on Westward Beach, it's, the concept would be something like a grade beam on top of caissons, and then the load would be the cars backed up against whatever grade beam you created, compacted, asphalted, and that way you can create a lot of extra parking, and, and the load can be absorbed by the grade beam and the caissons. So, it'd be similar to creating a parking lot like they did at the new restaurants and hotels. So, that, I think that's the concept you're talking about, just to give them direction and not spend too much time on exploring other avenues, but that's what they're going to have to do, to take the load of the cars.
Yeah, and, and I think that one thing that might have to be done is we may have to work with the county on that area and see how we could, why, I don't know if, if we would need to widen the easement, if the easement is wide enough there, where we could have head-in parking on each side of the road in a full two lanes, you know, maybe even, what would be awesome there, a lot of people do walk there, it'd be great if we could get an extension sort of of the path that's where Zuma is, so people wouldn't have to walk in the road, and they could walk, you know, not in the road, on a, a little walk path, or some, I don't, I'm reluctant to say the word sidewalk, I guess it is sidewalk, but...
A walkway.
A walkway, yeah. I think that if we did that on the ocean side there, and people could walk and not have to stare through cars, that it would make the place a lot safer, a lot more beautiful, and it would provide access for many more people to visit the beach.
And also cyclists, too.
That, that's possible, but first of all, we'd have to find out what kind of real estate we have there first. That's the first thing, and from that, then we could, it's really quite easy to do a design there to, to accommodate that, but it's just a real estate. Do we have enough actual room there to accommodate that?
We actually have pretty good easement there.
I think your drive-in parking, forward parking, I think that's a great idea, and that's one that probably can work in that area, so we can get more cars to park there.
And the other thing is, you know, it may be an area that we would look at adding a speed hump or two, that would slow people down, but I think that if we were to create this, this, this parking in this facet, and remove the, you know, have a walk path, that there may not be a need for that, so. And I, I think that we should make it a priority to work with the county to get this done, if it means working with Beaches and Harbors or Sheila's office, because I think it's something that would really benefit the residents and the, the rest of the public. If we did ever go to some sort of charge parking, I would make a strong recommendation that that didn't come into effect till about ten AM, because I do know that tons of people from Malibu and elsewhere have a longstanding attraction to that area in walking and running early in the morning, and I, I think that that should remain that way, so.
It's also known as drainpipe, great surf spot.
Let's not forget that there used to be houses on the beach right there. Also, you should look at the easement issue, Ariva, I did mention that to you, that, in the cul-de-sac down there at the road, there is a parcel that was recently purchased by some homeowners on the beach. It encompasses approximately half of the cul-de-sac, so we should look at cleaning that up with this project.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Bob, don't go anywhere. I had a question, can you just tell us what the Canaan Doom Road Widening Project is, and is that coming out of city funds or Measure R, or anything like that? I didn't know what it was.
What item number, was that again?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's seventy-one.
Sure. That's a project, that's actually, it's, it's kind of a residual project. When we did Canaan Doom Road a few years ago, by building that and re-angling that truck at Roster Bed there, we sort of pinched the road there, and we knew in the future that we would have to widen that little area out. One of the problems that we have there, though, is that, I guess, the property owner that's, there were, there's, I guess, bushes that are, I guess, ficus trees there. They personally planted them there. They are in the right of way, though, so removing those is going to be probably...
Are you going to have to finesse that one, Bob?
We're definitely going to have to finesse that one.
Well, he's been working on finessing that for a long time.
But anyway, that, that right there, is we do, we, we did plan on widening that out, and we got the funds, actually, the funds to do it, I think, they're not general, they're not general fund, funds, they're...
So, at, at one point, we got federal transportation dollars, and last year, we were able to convert those into what they call local transportation dollars, so they moved out of the federal pot into local dollars. So, that's the funding that we're using, it's about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, so it's not general funds.
It's not a, yeah, it's not a, it's a, actually, it's a quite simple project to widen that out, but it's the finessing that's going to be the issue.
Yeah, I, I remember, this has been coming out for a while.
The other thing, just, and also in light of what, what happened yesterday, which was an unfortunate event at one of the local, at Starbucks, was I think that we should look at increasing the, our funding as a whole towards our homeless issues and, and whatnot. I know that I saw the seventy-thousand-dollar application in from OPCC. I would request that the council look at funding that and similar items to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars, and really getting some substantial, you know, increased services out here, that we're really, really making a diligent effort on.
I thought that that was in, put in the budget somewhere, we had talked about that, no?
So, at this point, we haven't added funding specifically as a line item for addressing homeless issues, but I'm going to ask Councilmember Lamont or Mayor Protem Mullin to speak about the Administration Finance Subcommittee this morning, because we did discuss that.
What we, what we talked about doing was giving them exactly what they asked for, because it seems to be working. They've gotten thirteen people off the streets already, literally in housing, and we thought what we would do is use this next year with giving them all the funding that they asked for. This actually will pay for the two people that are on staff, and at the end of that process, if it looks like we are really making a huge dent in this thing, and then either work a line item or a contracted situation directly from the city through OPCC, or whatever the name is at that point. But we're, it's looking really good, you know, and, you know, so we have a lot of faith in that it might work well.
Okay, so, so we're looking at that number, I think it was at seventy-six thousand dollars? Okay.
And then I just want to speak to what you asked about, about adding several hundred thousand dollars. At this point, we don't have an additional several hundred thousand dollars to give away or to spend on anything. As Lisa, you know, mentioned, which she'll certainly look as we move through the budget process over the next few weeks, and if we feel that there's additional funding, we'll let you know. Right now, we're to the good of about twenty-nine thousand dollars, and that's what you have to play with, so.
Your comments are right on the money, though, and that's kind of a theme of what we talked about this morning, and there's a bunch of different entities that address the home situation in various...
Facets.
Yeah. But we're interested in putting most of the resources behind this one, because it's actually gets them out of their situation and onto something better, rather than just making their situation a little more comfortable as it is. So, we agree with you, and I think it's a big issue for the future.
And lastly, something that Jefferson's probably familiar with, and I don't know if it needs to be added to the work plan, or I guess it should be just added to the work plan, is the area of Pacific Coast Highway near the Adamson House with the deteriorating fence and sidewalk, and just kind of looks a little bit trash down there. It would be nice to work with Caltrans and/or Beaches and Harbors in the county to improve that fence and rail. I don't know, Jefferson, if you had any comments on that, but...
Thank you. It's, it's really a visual blight, and that's the only one in that area. It starts at Sarah, and it runs to the bridge. And yesterday and today, Caltrans was out there, or some work crews were trimming the trees back, cutting back that foliage that had come through the trees. I think the fence needs work, some sidewalk work, but the, the hazards there are, is that if you allow that to continue, the homeless encamp behind on the other side of the fence, the gates have to be locked, sometimes they're not, sometimes the locks are cut and the homeless go through there. So, I look at it as a fire hazard as well, back in there between Sarah's guard gate and the PCH.
I was actually referring to the other side of the highway.
Oh, the, the side where the... Oh, the side where the caster bean is?
Yeah.
Behind the wall?
Yeah, the area, exactly that. But I think that the zone that you're talking about is actually State Parks property. Is that correct?
Yes, but it wasn't State Parks doing the work today.
It's Caltrans.
It appeared to be Caltrans. They had all the blinkers.
Yeah. I'm talking about the fence, the waist-high fence. It's a chain-linked fence. Maybe it just needs to be removed or whatnot that's on the ocean side of the highway, running from the entrance to the Surf Rider parking lot down to where the first residential home is at, you know, right just west of the Malibu Pier.
So that's the railing area where everybody hangs their wetsuits, and yes, it's deteriorating, but that's county's property, it's Beaches and Harbor. But if somebody were to address that, they might look at it and work on it, because that's the other side of the blight area that you're discussing. Also, it's a trip-and-fall hazard thing. They come off the city sidewalk and they roll down the hill on top of the ice plant.
So I don't think you need to actually add that to the work plan. You could just by consensus give me direction to work with the other agencies, and I'll make sure it gets done.
Okay, let's fix that.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Anything else?
Yes, did we get consensus to explore the idea of working on the electrical adaptations that you had mentioned on their upgrades? Because I didn't know if we had consensus from the calendar, but I certainly would support that, exploring that in the future.
Can I read through the items that we're going to be adding, just to make sure that we're all on the same page? So we're going to add a million dollars into a designated fund for the solar capital costs or into the capital budget. Councilmember Wagner asked me to get some more information on the Lateral.
Sorry, we should actually increase that, because that needs to also include the EV infrastructure for us moving to EV vehicles by fleet by 2020. So that amount should be increased, and when you look at the numbers for that, I would try to get something in there for that.
Okay, we will do our best to estimate it, and the reason we didn't add in anything in the capital budget was because we weren't sure what those exact costs were. But we will add something in, and if we need more when we get to that point in time to approve the contract, we'll let you know. Councilmember Wagner asked me to get some additional information on the Latigo Cove accessway, which I will do. We're going to be adding something to the work plan about the undergrounding of utilities. One part of that would be to either encourage or require private properties to underground their utilities when they do an upgrade to their electrical service, and I will follow back up with Public Works and the Environmental Sustainability Department if that needs to be by ordinance or resolution. And then we're going to add to the work plan to address looking at undergrounding of utilities throughout the city, which is something that we have been actively in communication with SCE on. We will table for a few days the expenses for any parks, projects until May 8th, and at that time, if the council wants to give direction, we can add it into the budget after that meeting. We're going to add to the work plan improvements to the Westward Beach Road and add some funding in for design, and we'll get some better cost for that. We're going to add the traffic or safety issues at Heather Cliff and have our traffic engineer look at that. Mayor Peak asked me to look at the Westward Beach easement near Sunset Restaurant, and we will do that. And we will continue to monitor additional funding and let you know how much we'd have available to add to addressing the homeless issues in Malibu after the report from A&amp;F comes through, if you want to do anything else. And then just to my to-do list is to address the fence near the Adamson House. So those are the items I had, and if I have a consensus on all of those, we will make them happen.
Anything else, you guys? All good? All right, so.
Yeah, I think we're good.
The only thing I would just add, and I don't know if we can do it yet, just because it's so new, is looking for any of at least, you know, Westward Beach or whatever, seeing or maybe talking to Terry or something about finding out whether we can use Measure M funds for anything.
Yes, and I have that in my note, and then I also just want to let the council know that we are always actively looking at how we can pay for our projects with other money. I've asked the Community Services Department to actively stay on top of the Parks Bond measure, the LA County Parks Bond measure. That's going to be a competitive grant process, so that's something, you know, perhaps that would be available to do some things, parking issues and whatnot at a recreational area. So very high on our priority list.
Also to, you know, I don't know if there's any funding towards a solar project, but we should definitely look if there's any funding to that and or converting fleet to EV.
That's on our list as well, so we are definitely doing that. And then I just wanted to thank Assistant City Manager Sogar, Emma, the department heads and all the staff that really helped put this budget together without me, so thank you.
Is the sheriff's going to give us a discount next year? Okay, so we're done with 1A. You guys have consensus and direction on that, and I guess the next one is me for city council meetings. So you guys, the schedule's on the back here, and what, you know, one of the things that I thought may be wise for us to look as we look through the rest of this year and or even into next year is, do we need to increase the time or start earlier for any of our upcoming meetings because of the workload? I feel that we have a big workload. I feel we have a handful of long meetings ahead of us and some things that have been shelved a bit. So I would like to make headway and get through those items. I guess I'm asking you guys if you either want to, I guess, add a meeting, or, you know, maybe we would start a meeting or two a little bit earlier, closer to the five o'clock hour, and if we had closed session, would we be meeting at four or 4:30 or 3:30? We've had a handful of meetings recently that have gone into a later hour, and residents have expressed a lot of frustration in that at times, and it makes it difficult for us to make, you know, the, you know, decisions as we get into the 11:00 PM and whatnot and beyond. So I just wanted to open it for discussion, and I was told that now is the time to do it. Lou?
Basically, it seems to be, I think, starting earlier is not a bad idea. Basically, when we really get bogged down is during appeals. Most of the other business we have is handled relatively quickly and efficiently, because we've got staff reports to deal with. When it gets into the appeal situations, we're always dealing about, you know, emotional issues, and some of those things, you know, the investment of time that I think, in particular you made, to work out that thing with the Spurber Farrar issue was well worth its time because we haven't seen it again, and that's a step in the right direction.
That's because it's at Coastal now.
Yeah, well, God bless them. Let them do whatever they need to do.
I hear, I hear.
But what I'm saying is, yeah, it's on the evenings where there is appeals and stuff like that, maybe we should start earlier.
So maybe what I would take from that is a suggestion, if we know that we have an appeal coming up on an agenda, that the meeting would start closer to the, the public meeting would start closer to the five o'clock hour. And then, and then in the structure of that meeting, my suggestion actually would be that we finish the other business that's on that agenda prior, and we would, you know, we would put the appeal towards the end of that meeting. And then that way, just the people that are here involved with that, you know, they'll remain with us till the later hour. I don't know exactly how that will work, and maybe we'd have to adjust that schedule at the beginning of that meeting or something, but that may be something that we could look towards. Anyone else?
The lawyers will love that, because they can get here at five or six and bill till 11. I'm, but we also have Monday, the 24th. When I was on council previously, we always had that dark one, but if we needed to pick one up, it would make sense that that would be the one that could be the filler.
Absolutely. I don't know how the rest of council feels about that, and if anyone has any scheduled travel at this time during that time?
Actually, I do, but, yeah, I'm only one of you.
Is that something that you could possibly call in for?
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, if that becomes the way we want to do it, fine. My suggestion would be, why don't we try the five o'clock things before we add another meeting? If we think we need another, add another meeting, we can always do that.
My comment is, I have no problem getting here early, because for me, I take the day off anyway, so we can start at nine o'clock in the morning, as far as I'm concerned, no problem.
Laura?
I just want to point out a couple of things. If we're, you know, if some meetings start at five and some meetings start at 6:30, that can be confusing. And I haven't thought it through all the way, but maybe if we have some appeals, and maybe this is a terrible idea, like the opposite of what we want to do, but maybe what we do is we take a meeting, and I know we always have to have the other little things at every meeting, but maybe we try to schedule two appeals in one night so that they don't bog down, though that's a poor choice of words.
Are you saying that we would schedule a special meeting for the appeals?
No, just let's say it, we don't have, you know, we don't bring back, you know, some other things, but we, those are like the two things besides, of course, consent and everything else like that, and, you know, I, and sometimes it's also, I find that if you kind of try to put a time limit, okay, we're going to hear this in two hours or whatever, it help, well, no, I mean, it actually helps us be more concise with our thoughts, or maybe do some work prior to the meeting or things like that. So this way, we don't take two or three or four meetings, but we can put them in. I don't know, maybe it's a terrible idea.
Are we have, do we have any appeals coming up?
Well, I don't want to jinx anything by saying this, but looking down the long range, right now, we only have three appeals that are pending to be heard, so, well, that's better than what we had, so.
Well, it's not to say that, you know, and hopefully that one day is zero, sooner than later. Well, so I would, I do think that it's, you know, if we have an appeal coming up, I have no problem starting the meeting at five, and if I had a bunch of people that came and gave a bunch of resistance to it, we could go back to starting it at 6:30. I don't see.
Well, we do have an appeal on the 22nd, right?
We have an appeal on the 8th. Oh, no, we're continuing the 8th.
Yeah, on the, to the 22nd.
I'm sorry, that's continuing to the 22nd. So maybe just as a starting point, we could start the May 22nd meeting at five o'clock. We also have the budget public hearing that night, so maybe that would be a good item to hear first and then move into regular business, starting at 6:30, and see how that works for us, and then we can continue if it works.
So let's start there.
Sounds like, I think that's a good idea.
And then I, and then we do have, you know, we have the July 4th dark meeting, you know, if needed.
Yeah, it's the 24th.
Or, I mean, the, sorry, the. July 24th. I don't think we're going to be meeting on July 24th, July 4th. So do you guys?
Okay, well, this is why I have staff, that they've already noticed certain things for the May 22nd meeting, so stay tuned on that, and we'll check what we already noticed it for 6:30 that.
But can we notice that it's meeting earlier or no?
I'll need to check on the noticing requirement. If it's a 21-day notice requirement, it already would have gone out, so I'll see what I can do. How about that?
But also, oh.
We could move our part of it earlier.
Right, that's what I was going to say. We wouldn't be hearing the appeal, but I don't know what the legal is.
Let me double-check on everything. Kathleen, thanks for bringing that to my attention. Good thing you were here tonight.
Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, so I don't think you would need more, further direction, other than we're ready, willing, and able to work as needed. So we'll adjourn the meeting. I would like to adjourn the meeting in the name of Richard Mark.
Okay, second.